Yeah, you do. All right, so let's go ahead and open the meeting. It's Monday, October 16th, here at the Moretown Town Office Building, the John Huggable Meeting Room. And we're the Moretown Select Board. Looks like we have a full house here with all members present. We've got Sasha as well. And we've got a few different folks from Ray to Stefan and Carol. So I'm gonna start with admitting Dave Stapleton. He's on Zoom. All right. Hey, Dave?
Hey, how you doing?
Well, how are you doing tonight?
Well, I'm a little late getting to something, so I don't want to take too long.
All right. So we just opened the meeting. We're looking for public comment right now.
Okay.
So let me start with here in the audience. Is there anyone here for general public comments?
So I sent over a VT alert paper so that I can do the VT alerts through the emergency management.
Yes, I saw that. Did everybody see that email from Stefan?
It basically is formality so that I can, in the event of an emergency, send out a VT alert to the Moretown residents, you know, with pertinent information, whether they need to evacuate or stay in their home, or if there's some big event going on that requires, you know, an emergency to reach out to them.
All right.
And I went through a training to become certified as well.
Very good stuff, huh? Thank you. So Sean, you wanna make a motion on that or just so moved?
How does that work?
So moved.
How does that work?
Can we do a second first, then we can talk about it? Okay, Sean, go ahead. I mean, uh...
Well, how does that work? Is it through our cell phones, you mean?
Yes, so if you're signed up for VT alert, which that'll be up and coming. For town meeting, I'm gonna have pamphlets and be pushing VT alerts. If you sign up on your cellphone, it comes through as a text message. I can make it come through even if your phone's on silent. You know, send a notification anyway to make sure that you get it.
If you're in that case code.
If it's life and limb immediate, I can force it to call you even if your phone's... So... But that's above and beyond where I ever wanna get to. But it's a good thing. So like, if we do have flooding and the village needs to evacuate, I can send to Moretown that the village needs to evacuate, when and if it ever becomes a thing.
You can pinpoint a certain location.
And you can go on the map and pinpoint certain parts and areas as well. And you can do a sort of call, you know, the folks who don't have cellphones still, or have spotted service, you can have a sort of call, a landline as well.
Someone has to fill that form out.
So it's an online portal that I have. As long as you folks sign the form saying that I can be the primary contact and use it, and that I really am the emergency management director, basically, then I go into a portal online and can send it out. That's me.
Is it just that letter to Tom who's on...
Yes, that is it. Just that way they know that I'm really a person that has a town...
Is the authority.
Yeah, has a town's best interest in mind.
But if someone doesn't sign up or doesn't come to town meeting or doesn't, you know, I don't know, read front porch forum, Valley Report or...
The only way that they would ever get any alert is if we pushed it through all cell phones in that geographic area or all phone lines in that geographic area. Would be the only way those folks would get it.
So we really just have to do outreach to the public?
Yep, I'm getting pamphlets for town meeting. And, you know, we can figure something out. I might even consider doing a mailer to every household.
Well, maybe we could put it in with the town report.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Town report.
We could do a page in the town report.
I think we have that down somewhere.
Yep, that would be a great idea.
A little flyer in there.
All right. You have a question, Jim?
They get really old after a while sometimes.
You will not receive them from me for anything short of, you know, an emergency. We don't have boil water notices or anything in Moretown, so...
I love it. I'm gonna feel long inside.
I get them for every road closure that's like around my corner. And I get a text message, an email, and a phone call.
We won't have that here in town.
But anything, like if you're sending out, like if there's a boil water notice, like we can do that in the landline. We'll just send out, "Hey, there's a boil water notice," and everyone gets it.
On favor, would I?
Hi. So just while we have Stefan, so we're gonna... You're gonna do the emergency...
Yes. Also, tomorrow evening at 6:15 p.m., we'll be testing the emergency siren on the top of the fire station. It's been several years since it's been tested, and I just wanna make sure it still works. I've been putting it out from a form. I just put out a third one today. I put it out. I created a Facebook page for emergency management in Moretown. I put it out on that. I'm trying to give the outreach as much as possible to as many people. But if anybody has any questions, I have put it out a lot, and certainly they can reach out to me.
Thank you, Stefan. I know you're gonna be around for a couple things, so...
Is that like a two-minute max or...
So I'm told it's three minutes. I haven't actually activated it. I'm told it's three minutes or it was prior, so...
Are you sure it's gonna go off one? If you get this every day, it's gonna be...
Yeah, so it has a wind-up period and then a wind-down period. So if three minutes comes and goes and it's still blaring, I'll turn it off manually, but it'll still wind down. So it'll take another minute or so to wind down.
I think it's mainly just in this valley that you'll hear it.
You will be able to hear it, you know, upon anything this side of the top of the mountain road. You know, John might be able to hear it up at his house. So it reaches pretty far, I'm told. I haven't actually ever heard it myself outside of being right here.
My wife has just asked me about those. She's like, "Remember the day when I used to have these loud sirens that just went off?" I think they saw that though. You know, mainly the people in the village are gonna be the ones...
It won't be at the fire station for training anyway, so if they show up, we'll be able to tell them, "6:15 a.m.?" P. A.
All right.
All right.
Yeah, a.m. Time to get up.
All right, so let's move ahead. Since I was asking for public comment, I know Colin Noel came in. And he wanted to speak tonight, right, Colin?
I did, yeah, yeah. I did some wiring as well. I guess, you know, I've been to many of these meetings and have been asking for updates on the status of my Class 4 road. There are not any repairs that I was verbally told by a couple members of the road crew would be completed prior to winter. We've had a few events up there in the last month that have raised my concern level when I thought I should come back. Tom, who mentioned that somebody would get in touch with me and have my phone number or his email the last time I was here. No, he did, which is, you know, just frustrating on the communication point. But two Saturdays ago, I got stuck in the middle of the road because the road has been rebuilt with sand. It's an inferior material than it was prior to the disaster in July. And we gotta get it up to where it was prior to that disaster. You know, that's in our town bylaws to rebuild to that status. And the drainage has been plugged when they brought the grade right there to do some of its work. And it was an unfortunate event this Saturday. My neighbor passed away, and the emergency vehicles couldn't get trouble accessing it as well. So I just wanted to try to get some resolution to this matter. Winter's coming, and I know no work is gonna be completed once the snow's here.
Thanks. First of all, I apologize for someone. I'm getting back to you. We were really, really pretty good communication, but anyways, I got lost as far as who was gonna call you back.
Yep.
I did talk to Martin today about the situation, and he said that, first, Ray, he and you talked, Mrs. Brownsville wrote up about three weeks ago. I think it was right after that. The timeframe was working, but no one got back to you.
Yep.
From what I got from Martin, first, and he was addressing some of the letter I forwarded to him, he did say that all the fill and everything they used in the road up there was plant mix. It wasn't...
But you can come up with yourself. That's incorrect.
All right, I'm just... That's what I was...
I would love if it was plant mix. I would not be having these issues, and you wouldn't see me every meeting. I mean, I'd love to attend these meetings because I think matters that are addressed are important, but I wouldn't be voicing my...
Now, Ray, again, during this call with Martin, he indicated that you guys talked, and you guys both thought the road was...
Yeah, I drove to the road right after that letter, three weeks ago. And it was my... So my senses is that the road was better now than it was before the floods.
So Ray...
I went back up there over the weekend, believe it was Sunday morning, after the rain on Saturday, and again, I drove up through there. I have a truck. I only use two-wheel drive. I didn't see where there was any problem up there.
So there's two portions of the road that were rebuilt with sand. The drainage has been plugged and has not been fenced. If they would put a top coat of some plant mix there, that would probably help with the sinkage. I had my four-wheel drive vehicle, my Michael Chai, stuck that Saturday night. I smoothed out the road with my tractor on Sunday. I didn't see it come off.
So right from the split in the road...
Yes, sir.
Where your driveway splits off goes up. That's as far as I went.
Yep. Yes, sir. So down that hill towards where Jay's trailer is is where I got stuck in sand. Stefan, can you... Do you know if that road was rebuilt with plant mix?
It was rebuilt with plant mix to below the camp, Jay's camp. And then from there on out, it was the material that was there that was put in.
There's two...
We didn't actually bring in anything other than plant mix. It's the native what was there when we put back in that structure.
And there's some major issues there, especially with the drainage that got blocked. I mean, it's just gonna continue to erode the beautiful work that you and the team have done down below with grant money that we all received in 2020. You know, if we don't mitigate that drainage and we don't take care of the road, it's all just gonna crumble, and we're gonna be back here next year.
I agree with you about the crumbling and stuff. In my opinion, it is better than pre-flood. It wasn't draining great prior to the flood either.
There were two culverts that were in question that you just worked on that improved the drainage. Those culverts were lost in the flood and were replaced. One by the town and one by Garrett in the middle of the road. So there's two sections of the road that do not have any plant mix on them, and it's quite the sample in its wet. I mean, it's worse than flood season in October, guys.
Now, is this part of the... This is a Class 4B. Is that... That's correct, right?
Yeah. Correct. My only request is that the road is rebuilt to the standard before the flood, which should be passable in October. I understand that I live on a Class 4 road. But...
So I...
The drainage and the top surface material is worse than it was prior.
I drove up, not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before, and I made a duopoly out of my pickup, and I have all tired.
Yep.
I mean, I know there was a soft spot there.
Yep, that is everything. My contraption was stranded in the car until I could get home, park my vehicle, walk from home to where my tractor, and pull the vehicle out. And it's four-wheel drive. I can't have that happen in flood season or in the middle of winter with my whole baby.
Right. Now, again, on Class 4B roads, policy is people who are living on them typically...
That's correct.
...surface material. Having put any...
By town policy, it should be rebuilt to the standard that it was prior to the disaster, and that has not been the case. Well, these two sections of the road are not what they were prior. I never had any issues there. I can attest what they've said is true. Some sections are definitely better, but the two sections that were rebuilt with the existing material are far worse and are impassable when it's wet. And the drainage is a huge issue. It was existent before, and now it is non-existent. Maybe it had some issues, but now it doesn't create at all. It comes down to the base of that road.
Well, I guess I should probably take a walk up there with you. With, we'll take Ray and Martin, three of us, and we'll take a walk and see what...
Great. I've got photos of before and after if you'd like.
That would be probably the best.
Is email or phone call better for you all?
Probably email to Sasha with that.
Okay. Do you still have my contact information on file?
I'm sure we do, yeah.
Great. Somebody's gonna be in touch.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. We'll talk amongst these guys into tonight and tomorrow to see. Look at my schedule. When I can, it might be over the weekend.
Okay.
Might work. That's for me. I'm just traveling a lot, so we'll...
I can work around Ray's schedule, too. I can meet there.
Yeah, I'm not available this weekend, but I'm available prior to this weekend.
All right, we'll look there. Or maybe even earlier.
I really don't think it's gonna take too much material to, you know, mitigate these issues and too much drainage work, but it needs to be done, otherwise we're gonna have bigger issues down the line.
All right, well, we'll certainly take a look at it, Colin.
Thank you.
And also, to speak to the emergency vehicle park, I was up there Sunday. The ambulance was in the road.
It wasn't the ambulance. It was the trooper. It could have been you or her.
Okay. I was gonna say, I was up there with the ambulance, so I should remember that.
My condition's right there in the same state as you. Thank you for going up.
So Dave, do you jump on for public comment? Hey, Dave?
Yep.
Are you on for public comment tonight?
No, I was just gonna put it into the ZA discussion.
Okay. Well, very good. So now, if there's no other public comments, let's move forward. And next meeting agenda item is the ZA position. And tonight, we have Carol Chamberlain. So you wanna roll on up, Carol? Thank you for coming tonight, Carol. So as everyone is aware, we have been looking for planning, for a zoning administrator. This past Thursday, the Planning Commission had a meeting at, I guess it was October 12th, so it was Thursday. And there were Dave Stapleton, Deb Carroll, and John Schmelzer were there and interviewed Carol for the position and came back with a out-of-executive session to make a motion to recommend to the Select Board that we hire you as our zoning administrator. So here around the table, we take that recommendation very serious, but certainly have a few questions. So John, why don't we go ahead and start with you so you can get to know Carol? Maybe you know Carol?
I do. We served together on the Ridge River, and she was on the Planning Commission. And I think it would be great to have Carol as our zoning administrator. Very easy to work with and very knowledgeable.
Currently, you're working for the state, is that correct?
Correct.
And is this something you'll be able to take on? Do you think you have enough time to do?
Yes, and I'm... The plan is to lessen state hours over the next few months, and then if there's more that you'd like the zoning administrator position to pick up.
Yeah. Yeah, I was looking at your resume and also some of the other things that you could do. You're familiar with websites?
To a degree, yep.
What else would you wanna share?
What else would I wanna share? You're not gonna ask me questions. I'm gonna make you come up with things. Well, I'm going to share this just because it's fun. When I was growing up, the whole siren thing. When I was growing up, the ambulance service at 6:00 a.m., if there was a snow day, would blow their siren just once because that was when they still called the volunteers to ring the siren. So that was... That's something I kinda missed. It was always fun to lie in bed and wait and see if this is a...
If it was gonna be a snow day, you know, we should go back there.
But in terms of zoning administrator, you know, I've always kind of enjoyed the work. I enjoy the planning world, and I haven't totally perused Moretown's zoning rules and bylaws yet, town plan, but I'm familiar with everything that goes into getting those created and then forcing them and following what's going on.
How many hours do you think you can start now?
Well, that was one thing we weren't real clear about when we were talking about it the other night when I was speaking with the Planning Commission. And I know she had 10 hours of office time. I didn't know if that was the extent of her hours or if she worked more than that.
Each week was different?
Different.
And we certainly allowed for more, and she said there were certainly plenty of things to do to take up that time. But I would look at the budget and see where we are putting in the end of the year, but try to make sure we're fitting within that. But there's plenty of... You're lucky you're coming in after Karen. Karen's done a lot of work in the last year to get things put back together.
Organized.
There have been a lot of things that hadn't been organized or done well. And that's what we're hoping to see continue. So I am, based on what Karen had to say, and based on what I've seen through the recommendation and other people talking about your qualities, I think certainly you would work well here. You know, we're a pretty hands-off board. You know, we're here to support you, but as a zoning administrator, you know, you're kind of on your own.
Yeah, yes.
Robin, what do you think?
Well, one thing Karen brought up is that our process is pretty manual. Is that something you're familiar with? There's not really any automation software, so it's all...
All still paperwork.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
All right. That was your biggest issue, I think, getting all that done within the timeframe.
Is everything completely papered? There's no electronic recording of...
Oh, no. All the documents and stuff are available on the website and stuff. But as far as submitting the forms and reviewing them, that's fairly manual. There's all the bylaws and stuff.
Yep.
And that's the type of thing that we would hope that we could work towards as we have, if you have more hours and more experience here. And Karen was moving towards that. In fact, we had allocated some money for some software. I think it was a PDF software or something that converted something into PDFs or something. Well, you could talk with her about that because she was like, "That would be the one thing I'd like to start with there."
Yeah, so a little bump up of Adobe software is good to be able to work with PDFs.
Yeah. Kelly, what do you got?
Yeah, well, I just noticed in, I think it was Dave's correspondent or in their discussion about maybe having some time, that Carol was spending with Karen, and that maybe, you know...
Yeah.
So I didn't know if we should get that on the table, too, because it seemed like a good idea if we can, if we have, you know, have the funds and the budget to be able to bring Karen, if Karen has the time and bring her back to work.
And she is willing to do that?
Yeah.
She said she would, so, you know, I think, you know, what we'd like to do is get you started as soon as possible and get Karen in here that first day with you so that, you know, just sit down. This is, Zach could save you, you know, half a day right there by having her to show you what's going on. There's several things going on right now. I know Dave, who's here on the Planning Commission. Dave, you're working on a few permits, is that correct?
Well, Cheryl and I are just trying to make sure we're up to date on where things stand and everything and don't wanna get, you know, get hung up. And I think we're up to speed on that pretty well, although I saw Ray there in the background, and I think we're waiting to hear something from him. Not as you're right. I sent him an email the other day. I haven't been back, but anyway, don't bother.
All right. So I guess, so there are some number of things that are in the works, on file, so... John, what do you got? Anything else?
No.
Carol, what do you have for questions for us?
I guess what would be the... What would be the number of hours you would hope that I would...
Minimum to start would be 10.
Okay.
I think you're gonna need to do that many to be able to do the job.
Be able to do the job.
Right. And, you know, if you were up at 15 or 16 for the first couple of weeks, just getting into things, I could see that certainly being very plausible and, you know, hopefully averaging, you know, 12 to 13 hours for the rest of the year. And then, you know, we can talk as we're doing the budget stuff. We can talk, decide, you know, you'll have a little feel of it here in the next month or so. And then we can say, "All right, what's your case for it? And what do you, you know, what do you think you could do with this in the next year? What do we have for money to do it? And, you know, what's the payoff for having that done?"
Okay.
So I think we can work very well. Right up the tip of my tongue, I don't have... What were we paying on this? Do you have that ready for us? I apologize if I have it on. All right.
You are all going, looking at way too many sheets like that over the next few weeks.
So you look right and face the...
So we budgeted $23,800 last year.
Oh, I think that we came out to, it was... Do you have the hours are done?
No, I don't, but I thought we had based it on an average of 10 a week.
Right.
Well, what, 10 hours a week?
Any other concerns you have? Sorry, that's not really able to get you what the rate is.
Yeah. I don't think so. I'm, you know, I'm sure I'll have questions as I get into things. It will be helpful to have Karen, at least for a few hours, to show me around.
John, I haven't actually, I don't really... So we started Karen, and we'll do the same with you at 3250. That's fair. And if the board, we need to vote on that. But after formal recommendation from the Planning Commission, our job is really just to make sure you know, come in here with two heads on your shoulders here, which you have not. So I'd make the motion to the board to go ahead and hire Carol Chamberlain for our zoning administrator position.
I'll second that.
Thank you for the discussion. I'll go, would I?
I agree.
So if you wanna stop in this week or call and speak to either Sasha or Cheryl Lynn, get this stuff, I guess she had that all ready for you.
So I'll return all this when I start.
And then, in the meantime, I'll give Karen a call in the morning to find out what her schedule is. And then I'll reach out to you.
Okay.
And I'm trying to figure out when we can get you guys together, or I'll look you guys up and you guys will figure your schedules out. Is that right?
Yeah.
And Carol, I am the liaison to the Select Board for the zoning administration.
Okay.
So if you wanna communicate with me at all regarding anything, I always look, Tom's the point man, but if you have any issues and you wanna discuss it or if you're up there when you meet with Karen or anything like that, I met with Karen before she left, so I'm kind of up to speed on the process and everything that's pending.
Okay.
So if I can hook in anybody, please let me know.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Rob. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good work.
Let's see you on...
Thanks, Dave.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, so we're actually right on time. We have open culvert RFPs. Ray, excuse me, you're gonna give us an update.
Yeah, so part of the paperwork, we have, we have some work that needs engineering done. Basically, three culverts, one on, or two on Lord Brook and one on Jones Brook. And we also have the slope failure on Lovers Lane that requires engineering as well. So to start the process, we sent out an RFP to... To start the process, we sent out an RFP to find out any engineers that interest in the job, doing the work. It's not, we're not issuing the contract at this time, but at least this is like a pre-qualification, what you're looking at tonight. And from this point, and I think there's only two, Auto Creek and...
DuBois and King.
DuBois and King. Probably invite them both to a pre-bid meeting to look at the actual project and then get some pricing, better pricing at this, at that time. So that's, that's it for the, that, or, yeah, just wanted the SLIF board to make sure they opened them. There may be some rates in there, but it's not an official contract.
And so from this, then you will invite them to a...
A pre-bid meeting, I might say, and let the SLIF board know. Probably will have, should have a SLIF board member at the meeting.
So this is just the culvert, not Lover's Lane?
No, this is for all, there's, yeah.
The three culverts?
Three culverts and Lover's Lane.
Oh, and Lover's, okay.
Because we need, we need according to the DTE area on every one.
Yeah.
So that's where we stand on that.
Nice, yes, so this is...
One likely, you know, be, whatever happens, it's, you know, we're not going to get any design work back probably till sometime this winter. You know, it'll be next year's work at some point.
And you think Lover's Lane now is going to be?
Well, we had, and I've got all of this with Martin and Stefan, we're going to put a temporary guardrail up, harden out, or before winter, whenever that might be. And it's going to be one lane through there. We didn't want to put tears of areas because of the weight.
Weight load, yeah.
So we're putting guardrail up and I guess they're going to plan on plowing it with the, with the smaller truck, the Dodge truck.
Stefan, that'll be your job, huh?
Yeah, I'm pretty excited about it. It'll be nice in there for me.
I mean, if there's a chance of we get a design back and possibly that work to be done in the winter time, depending on what the, what the fix is. But I suspect it's going to be removing quite a bit of that material out, finding where the rock is and building back up again.
So this is based off FEMA's site visit?
What's that?
This is based off FEMA's site visit?
I'm sorry.
Their site visit?
Yeah.
From FEMA?
FEMA's looked at it. Yeah, FEMA looked at it.
So these are off that?
Yeah. So, and continuing on with the FEMA stuff, right? So the twenty-third is the deadline for your FEMA damage inventory. So I kind of concluded that today. Quite a list. It's like six pages long, but it's all GPS coordinates of all the work, all the culverts, everything. So the, without the major repair, it's, it's going to be like three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars of repair work we've done. And yet if you add in these other culverts and slide, it's well, it's like one point six million. So it's quite a bit of work involved here.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping that we at least get started on this inventory, some of it, and we should be able to get some reimbursement fairly soon. We're going through the invoices and getting charged out to the right locations.
They're only invoicing for cat feed right now? They're only paying out for cat feed? So your emergency protective measures, they're not paying out for anything else yet?
Yeah. But we've had some, like, the repair of your culvert, that was an emergency repair.
Yeah, so basically like the lack of...
And the culvert, the big culvert on Ward Brook wasn't an emergency repair. So, you know, we got quite a bit of money tied up.
Yeah, I've noticed.
Yeah. That's, that's where we stand on the FEMA work.
Nice. So from these, there are some rates in there, but again, just general rates.
General rates.
And it's really talking about their qualifications, so.
Yeah, both these engineers have done work with the town and are still doing work with the town, so I'm pretty confident in them, but, you know, we have to follow the process.
Yeah.
We had invited, we invited, I believe, half a dozen engineers and this is what we have, two bids, so. But we'll just take those proposals.
Glad, at least Sasha, she can make copies for you if you want to look at them. But go ahead and then let us know when that meeting's going to be and between the five of us, one of us should be able to get there.
Actually, I think they're both emailed to Cheryl and she's...
Alright, yeah, we got some more, Ray, you can...
One question in the installing a guardrail on Lover's Lane is that, will that have any impact driving those, you know, driving the post down into that soil?
Yeah, as far as...
Putting, installing a guardrail there.
Well, they'll use longer posts.
You know, yeah.
I don't think so.
The soils, will that?
Have any impact? I don't believe so, I mean, that's by Loppe yet, we're going to build, Loppe's specialties. We're going to do work and that's pretty, if there is an issue out there, we'll stop.
Alright, well, thank you.
I did want to update you on this project, the stormwater project. So we're, as you can see, visibly, we're near completion, but we do have an issue out here in that the contractor did make a, had a bust in his grades and he has looked up to it. The pipe going across the parking lot is a foot high. And it gets near the school, it's going the wrong direction. So if you notice out there, you have one catch base and it's really high.
Yeah.
And he kept on saying his grades were right and that the engineer was wrong, though it turns out that he had made a mistake. So the plan right now, if the weather cooperates, is school is on vacation Thanksgiving week.
Yep.
We're going to, he's going to dig it up and relay the pipe and get it to the right grade. You know, if the weather doesn't allow us to do that, we're going to lower that catch base and put a steel plate on it for the winter, if nothing else. So, but he is, you know, he's owned up to it. I mean, we, both myself and the engineer, we're, you know, he has to shoot the grades, but we, we were after him several times, double checking and everything. And he, he was pretty sure that he was right all the time, but it didn't turn out that way. But in his, on his behalf, he is, he is owned up to it as well. And there's been some issues over around the school, the school as well, that he's owned up to. He's had to go back and work on, so.
I mean, it looks, it's pretty good out here.
Yeah, the pond and everything came out well.
And it doesn't look like he damaged anything under Howard's land. I mean, when we were walking there, there was those bushes and stuff.
Yeah.
Amazing, you don't take that out.
Yeah, it did work out well. Very little disturbance other than lawn. You know, his driveway, they're going to redo his driveway, create toward that.
Yeah, that's all.
I think Howard's satisfied. It's unfortunate, but I don't know what else we could have done. The contractor has got the right grades, you know?
Yeah, no, given him the, the charge, the work off, you know, when he makes the study, it's too bad. Oh, well.
Been in that position on the other side before.
Yeah, I think that's one of those you probably won't make again. I think this is probably down the curve, right?
They are really, they really are.
I think they've done a nice job as long as he takes care of what, you know, what he's taken care of, that I love.
Well, that's, that's about it, those two jobs.
Well, thanks, Ray. So you have your RFPs, you can go ahead and, and get that going. Continue pushing with, you know, the FEMA stuff.
FEMA is a tremendous amount of paperwork.
Yeah.
Tremendous. And, but, you know, I think I got it in the long day, just being Cheryl and myself. FEMA's been really cooperative, working with them, Jerry Fisher fees.
Alright.
Very nice guy.
Then I'll call you in the morning and we can, separate time, now I'm thinking about it, maybe we could do it early morning this week and run out to Collins.
I don't know, I think the road is better now than it was, but glad to take, if there's something I missed, walk and drive it through. Honestly, I thought it was in pretty good shape.
Alright, we'll go up, we'll take a look. Maybe add some pictures so we can judge it from there. Alright, anything for Ray? Nothing else? Alright. Let's make sure we don't have any other one here. Looking to get in, we don't. And now we have the rec, rec committee. Is that right? Looks like it's under my rights. Yep.
Chris Stevenson, Chair of the Rec Committee. Well, I don't want to exclude anyone. I think Susan might be here, is it for me?
I'm here.
I'm sure Stephanie is as well. Never really know.
Move on in there, Chris.
Okay.
See you. And everyone, Susan, why don't you, I know you're part of the meeting, one up and...
Let's get that out there. She's one of the other.
Yeah, so I submitted our draft budget and got asked to come in here, share it with you. We can, I can walk you through it or you can ask questions, it's...
Why don't you go ahead and walk us through it first while you're waiting?
Okay. Yeah, just for reference, last year's budget ask was, because we shared costs with the school on certain line items. Just for reference, last year was just under seven thousand, but the Moretown component of it is just, you know, four thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents, so we're still spanning against that. And I didn't really prepare a formal update on that, but we're going to be within our budget this year is where we're headed. And the ask for next year is a shared cost of fifty-two hundred and the town component, or a total cost of fifty-two hundred and the town shared component is four thousand and fifty, so it's coming down a little bit. As far as what we had in there, probably one of the most exciting topics is portlets, as you can imagine. And we actually just finished installation with the Eco classrooms to put in a new type of portlet up in their kindergarten pre-k classroom by a company called Wasted.
Yeah, so I wanted to know a little bit about that because I have a few concerns, but tell me about them.
They have a really great YouTube video that there's no way I could be as funny as. But, I mean, essentially, there's a lot of young energy and redesigning the perception of portlets and ensuring that they're clean and have toilet paper, which based on our experience this year would be a big improvement from our current vendor. But I think what makes them special, and I can't do it full justice, is they trap, they actually call it a, oh my lord, what's the name, deposit station or a donation station? And they're going to separate out the urea essentially and use it in agriculture. P cycling, yes, that library is actually hosting a p cycling. I think it's in Waitsfield or Warren this Thursday, but there's more to know than I could share with you, but that's like the gist of it. So this unit was pretty cool because it fit in the back of my truck and then it like popped open like a piece of origami. And so it's just kind of cool. They evidently, they evidently have a lot of different styles, including permanent installations at their Oregon, they have an Oregon office so at some like heavily used recreation areas, so they can do a permanent installation in the future. We've talked about getting out of the Eco classrooms, but I don't think anybody is a hundred percent decided on where that would want to be, you know, where that would need to be.
Right.
How you pay for it is really necessary.
So this is just a temporary?
Yeah, this is just a plastic pop-up portlet that they're going to come and clean.
Alright.
I think bi, it said weekly, but I think everyone agreed bi-weekly is going to be just fine. Those kids are three feet tall and out there all in a day and weeks.
So is that for everyone to use or is it just the kids or how's that?
That unit is just for the Eco classroom. It goes on there, it's not in here. But the reason I bring it up is because we have had issues with our current vendor and they don't have any greater purpose story, so I think it was inspiring to move, if the budget didn't change, to move to a vendor that was trying to do something inspiring. And further, I mean, how many times have, I did have a few emails from Susan, her extra volunteer work, making sure it's clean and there's toilet paper.
Really, Susan?
Yeah. We don't have any pictures or anything to share, but it's true.
So much sense of...
I have pictures.
I'll put pictures.
I think the only guy in there, you know, we start moving forward on more of those or thinking of culvert types. We just need to make sure there's covenants and there's wells and things that we need to make sure that we're paying attention to and what's going on up there.
Yeah. Before we break and drill a hole in the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think anybody has a timeline for that. I mean, we've been talking about this Eco solution for a few years and it came in pretty hot and fast from Lulu this summer. I missed an email and was suddenly behind on my heels, but it's up there now. I did interview a couple of the kindergartners at the Community Town Event on Saturday night and they hadn't used it yet.
Well, maybe they will just follow up with a...
Yeah.
So, alright, so thank you, Chris, for that update on the portlets. We have the fourteen hundred there. The next item down, you had court maintenance for thirteen hundred?
Yeah, so this is, actually, a lot of these invoices have come in this year. What we do in the court maintenance line is put a few hundred dollars usually for crack fill or any sort of like putty or paint. And what we did this year is there was ambition to get the courts repainted so that instead of there being capability for only two pickleball games at once, two tennis games at once, or one of each, now we can have two pickleball and tennis or four pickleball or two tennis. So it's just like, and you see the buzz out there. People, I don't have a head count, but it's highly used now.
I've used it myself this summer.
Yeah.
Several times with my daughter and me as well, playing pickleball and it's, and there's always people there. And, yeah, I think it's a good thing and you guys are doing a good job with it. Thank you.
It's been nice to have the basketball players have a space and we can shift if we're using courts that would make it important for tennis people to have their side.
Yeah.
So it's been real flexible and nice. And we've doubled our capacity for pickleball, which has been highly in demand, so.
Yeah, how many years ago, Susan, was it that you came with that idea of pickleball?
Seventeen.
Was it? Really?
I think so. I, just to put tape down.
Yeah, I mean, you were like on the forefront of this whole pickleball.
Yeah, that's history.
She, yeah, and I, to myself, I like pickleball, you know, that's for old people. You know, I didn't, now it's, now I'm old, I guess, so I've aged in. But it's, yeah, there are leagues now, I mean, national, you know, professional leagues.
It's even on ESPN at times.
So I, you know, I expect sometime maybe you see a new one there.
No, we're about playing and having fun.
Good.
We're playing, the emphasis is playing.
Well, that's awesome. I'm glad it's taken off and you really are always a person to stand and thank for it because you started, yeah.
Yeah, it's been nice taking credit for Susan's work on that.
But I'm going to have to slash your budget off.
Alright, that's fine. You're good to do it. So what we did is we are incurring some receipts from this year and we put them in the next year's budget. I was going to, once I get them, ask if you want to take it out of this year's budget against a different line item. I don't know the exact...
Yeah, let us know and then when we get, depending on, I got a big expense to talk about tonight, so I don't think there's going to be any kind of...
These are smaller expenses, yes. Oh, I see.
Enough will be left over. Any problem's going to be taken.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, yeah, so then this, and it would have the money that was spent to paint it, tape it, paint it. And we bought two...
Four nets.
Four pickleball nets off of Amazon, I believe. And they're, they roll around, so they go, they're in your way or they're out of your way. They're very flexible.
And a nice thing, again, I've used them and they're very sturdy, they're aluminum, so they're light, they can be moved. It seemed like everyone was welcome to use them, so.
So we're hoping to get the donor of the, those props essentially, we're hoping to reimburse them in next year's budget. So we're hoping to get the donor of the, those props essentially, we're hoping to reimburse them in next year's budget. That's what's in the 1,300 then. I think a thousand dollars of that, roughly, 1,100 dollars of that is the nets and the paint and the tape.
All right, what else?
Playground renovation, it's on the radar, there's no money in there. We've had a couple meetings with Kate, and we're trying to like build a plan essentially with the school, she's coming into her new role. And she already has a playground addition, so I don't feel you're on that unless you want a bunch of half answers right now. But we wanted to make it visible to people in town, so we put that in there. The fence, we don't expect to have any issues, we did a pretty major fence repair this year, about $870. I didn't look at it today on my way in here, but I think it's still in great shape, it was in great shape for Morfest. So that's just incidentals, is what's in that line item, it should, we need to get a repair done that would allow us to cover what we would call as maintenance fees. We didn't act on it, should I move on?
You can go ahead, you can do it.
The kiosk, but the grant money is still there, the project got held up. So what that means is that we will refresh the map on the Trailhead signboard right into the Storywalk entrance, we have a chance to refresh it. So that's still grant money that we plan on spending next year. The towns are not actually paying, it's, it came out of some community level funding.
Free, okay, you have, and then trail improvements, a thousand, all right.
That's a matching grant, yeah, I mean, I can give you a lot of updates on the riders. If you want them, but they essentially, the gist of it would be, they hired a field maintenance group, and they do a lot, they've done a lot of repair work around the valley, and it's been pretty awesome. You know, having someone on staff, kind of like having your own town highway department, they're able to go and fix things and make a lot of improvements to some beat-down trails. So I think the goal next year would be to, I think we put in to get them here for two weeks, and that they would come and help with some of the reroutes around the Eco classrooms. It's a little bit dependent on the town forest management plan finishing out, and a few volunteers figuring out how to reroute it. But they would then come in and help do the work. And I'm not sure that the grant money would be needed for that, but, you know, if we were, if we had a big mutual ask, this would allow us to catalyst funding from other sources, including riders.
Before we move on to the education improvements, thanks for putting in the line item as far as playground renovation. Would you add fields into that as well, or does that include the fields? Because we're not, one of the things, spending more time around here, lack of a really good playground in the fields, which we have nice fields, but they're all in pretty poor shape. You know, would that be a different line item that we should add in there, and so that there's some visibility, and there's, because I think that something needs to be looked at.
I think it would be a separate line item, but it's definitely something that we've been talking about, and we could have put it in here as a placeholder. One of the things that we've tried to do is find out, Lisa Loomis even interviewed me in the spring, and I haven't seen it come out in the Valerie Report, but she was trying to do an article on who's using all the rec fields around the Greater Valley, so not just the rec district, but Mad River, or Moretown and Ducksbury. And, and whether or not we have enough fields and courts and basketball, and all that type of stuff. So I think my next step is to follow up and see if that article went anywhere and what she learned. We met with the nonprofit that manages Couples Field to see if they knew of any youth groups that wanted to play here. One of the problems that I guess I'm dodging around is nobody's really playing on the baseball diamond.
Right.
Except for a little bit of soccer, and their only complaint was to take a rock out, which money to come out, I don't know. I ran it over, and then I found it and took it out. Okay, that's gone, so trying to figure out that balance of like, improving the fields for who, and like, what will come, right?
Exactly, they're usually, because they're in rough shape, but if they're fixed, will they come, or is it?
Right, the carton horse, yeah.
But, and I think if we have a line item, sometimes there's grants available, and those type of things, if it's, you show that there's something there, or you're working on something.
Yes.
Easier.
Great, I will, it's now on my version. I'll populate that more. And on that note, some of the back fields, because we have a lot of field, we have wet field and dry field, we have a couple types of field. Because of the success that Susan has brought to town, you know, there could be justification for more parking back there as well at some point, so. That's the other thing we've loosely talked about, is how would we, you know, what do we really need in three or five years to grow the capacity of use that we've seen, so.
And then you have bear initiatives on the education?
Yep, so we supported that in last year's budget. It's a five-town coordination with a couple other nonprofits, including Friends of Mad River, Stark Mountain Foundation, Sugar Bush. Providing education, I think one of the biggest things that we did last year, if you're looking for flavor on that, was host a bear contest and try and elicit entries, we got poetry, we got kids drawing, some stories. And we got a couple of entries from Moretown, and actually, the prize, which is sort of randomly selected from anyone that puts something worth it into the hat, was a bear-proof trash rotor, and so one of our residents won that this year, yeah. We gave two away, so that was really exciting to deliver that locally. And so the ask is to support that again, and everybody in the committee was pretty excited about that. The bear population is at the highest level in like five or 10 years, so a lot of people are seeing bears. We've been at the farmer's market, we've been up at the ski events, we're trying to hit second homeowners, which sort of also need that education, yeah.
I just had one on my lawn last, this past weekend, and he was eating apples. And it was, it was actually very cool, he'd take, pull them off, and then he'd get on his stomach and like eat, like this, and then stand back up, I got it on film, I'll show you.
Oh, you should enter in the contest!
I stopped just thinking when I saw that.
Yeah.
And he did it for three or four times, then he caught my scent, and he was just gone.
Well, that's a good sign, right? You're lucky.
Yeah, he was like, what do you have?
So fast. I mean, if they didn't face them, they would have just, they wouldn't move, they just, like, they would just, they just, they would stand right there. Their ground, I mean, eventually, if you charged them, they would move, because...
Right, that's if you want to be average person. So there are lots of bear arounds.
Yeah.
That looks like it finishes you up.
Yeah, and we're gonna work with Eco Classroom and support their winter fest, which I thought, for them, was a huge success, and it's, I think, an opportunity for us to, you know, build on.
Sure, all right. Any questions for Chris, or?
Did you say you have some funds left over for this year that you'll keep putting into the next year? Or was you go through all your...
Yes, I've been...
Well, we didn't do the trail, the grant, the thousand-dollar trail program, phase two grant match, we had in last year's budget, and it's not gonna get spent this year, so it's one thing I meant, and then the other was the pickleball props essentially, the peanut potato, those are around 1,100 dollars, and I don't have the invoices yet, but this address is paying it in March, once, you know.
Oh, I see, it goes, it's available, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right.
We already have that paid for. Yeah, it's, it's not the right way to do it in the long term, but I think it was pretty generous, they're getting a lot of use, it's a fair investment, I think, for us.
So Chris and I worked together a little bit. There was talk of getting a brush hog for the side sled hill, and they also talked about the bee yard, we're getting brush hog down every year. And Chris and I talked, and he put in some money in the budget this year for a brush hog, but he left it kind of up to me to figure out what would fit on our, on our Covota that we have at the shop. And I did get a couple quotes, we've been busy, so I don't have the time to bring them to him, but it's looking like $2,300, $2,235, and that was from Shankland Valley, and that was the low of the two bids that I got, and the other one was 2,600.
And we budgeted 26,000, I believe, so, yeah.
All right, a little, we're not gonna discuss this now, but...
Yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure it was still brought up and tracked.
Chris, any questions for us?
No, I don't think so.
Can I ramp it up a topic?
Sure.
Halloween, because last year, the trucks that blew both ends of town made a huge difference in the speed of the traffic. It made it much safer, so I was hoping that could happen again this year.
I had planned on it, if the board's okay with the town truck sitting at either side of town.
That'd be great, thank you.
Very good. Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're moving right along, and, we'll, hey, good Michelle? Oh, not too bad. Doug is not here, is he? Did you hear from him, no? And did you confirm with him that he was coming? We'll wait a couple minutes, take a break. Anyone else hear from Doug at all? Thank you, Susan, have a good night. Colleen, have a good night.
Should we do more fast first, and then Doug comes with all?
Do they, is anyone else coming, Michelle, or is it just you, or? All right, so let's, you know what, while we're waiting, we got people, why don't we go ahead, Sasha? Start with some reports, communications from you, please.
Cheryl wanted to make sure that you got the budget status report sheet and all that, right?
Did everyone get that, the budget status report?
Haven't really had a chance to look at it yet.
Yeah, so we'll, towards the end of the meeting, when we get into old business, I'll highlight a couple things that we need to take a look at.
In my stack of stuff I have, I think I have one error and a mission, and a letter from Stefan, and then Sullivan and Powers, who are actually from Cheryl, and she should talk to you about it. I think it's for next year's...
I'll take a look at it here, recall.
And we got a estimate for, when we had Pete come to our PMs for the buildings, they found that our water pressure valve here is going to be, it's up $750, and I've had it up on that.
And that has to be done...
Soon.
Okay.
Didn't say like this year, but he said it's coming, so, just to give us a warning on it.
Make sure when we're doing budget, we're putting that in for early next year.
Water pressure valve?
Yeah.
Got a curb cut in the pile, I've got the permit from Washington Electric co-op that I emailed to everybody right after the last meeting for road work.
Yep.
I left everybody their annual healthcare declarations to fill out.
And once that is filled out, then you, people will get their annual check, is that it?
Yep. And Robin needs to do his W2. I've got loan documents from Cheryl as well for the Greater.
Have we heard?
I don't know on that, any update?
Stefan, have you heard any updates on the Greater?
Last we heard, it was on water.
Still.
And that was, that was two weeks ago, we heard from him, so he said four to six weeks, but that was weeks ago, and who knows what'll, what'll happen when it gets customed, or, or if it's actually on, but we really know.
And it's coming to Maryland or New Jersey?
He didn't, I don't remember if it was ever mentioned where it was coming into, what quarter it's coming into. But it can take up to 60 days to travel from there, according to the Google.
Jeez, all right, well, looks we have some...
We're hoping.
Yeah.
Docs to look at, what else?
Mike Stroney sent an email, he would like to be appointed to the rec committee. Is that something that you know anything about?
Yeah, I haven't met him yet, but Susan knows him well, and I, he has a lot of experience, I think, in recreation, so.
Yes, he does.
Yeah, and, yeah, succession planning is a topic that I hope is for all of us, so I'm hoping that he'll come in and want to take some responsibilities.
All right, so I'd move to accept the, what was the name?
Mike Stroney.
Mike Stroney? John?
Second.
Colin, favorite?
All right, fine.
Thank you.
Be good to get him in sometime, if he'd just come in and introduce himself to us, it sounds like most people know him, or?
Yeah.
Looks not certain.
Yeah. Looks known on the internet, but I am not.
And the last thing I have is one of the benches out on the porch, the historical society's, I guess, Dr. Butch would like to have one of them's put over at the historical society building, since it's the loan line.
Yep.
So I just wanted to let you guys know, one of them's gonna come up missing, and it'll be over there.
It'll be over there.
Yep. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. It's more of your crew. Hi, Lindsay. How are you? Good, thanks. Kelly, you got anything for us?
I think, given all the situations that have come up with classwork roads in the last couple years, we may want to think about looking at that policy, and what that policy really looks like, and making it a little bit more clear, because there have been a lot of issues. It seems like with things just coming up, and what the town is gonna do, and what the town is not gonna do.
Yeah, it has been, we're gonna look at it every year, to be honest.
All right, so probably, that's probably one of the...
I don't know, legal trails have the same kind of pressure on them.
Yeah, and I think, and I don't know if it's just property changing hands, and the county is not sharing information, they're not understanding it, or what it is, but it just seems like there's a lot more development going in there, and I think we need to be really clear about, as a town, what we're gonna do, what we're not gonna do, and stick to it.
Right, no, I think, and that's where that document came in, is when we got it on here, there was willy-nilly, we tried to get it, and as you said, things have kind of deteriorated a little bit, and we also, I think we need to, as Don says, maybe even, or maybe you didn't say it, but we talked about getting the Planning Commission, or the DRB involved as well, so that when people are getting permits, they're well aware of, all right, you're getting a permit here for a classware road, a house, but you're gonna be responsible for all charges and costs.
And the timing is good for the Planning Commission, since they're starting, or have been working on the town plan.
All right, so we'll work that into our next, probably our next discussion we can bring it out. I don't think a lot of people know him, and then we can start soliciting advice on what we should do with it.
Yeah.
Robert, what about you, what do you have?
I got nothing.
All right.
He was only person, that's great.
Yeah, Don, I'd go to you, I know you'd take forever, so. John?
I, I don't have anything.
So one thing you were wondering about was the, uh, cutting it.
Cut it, yes.
Yeah, so talk to Martin, one of us needs to go there and kind of show him where.
Okay.
So I told him either you or I would do it, and, so it'll probably have to be you at this point. But it depends on how things are going, I mean, wreck a day and just go ahead and do that, but he's aware that he's done, he's willing to get it done this fall.
Okay.
So it can be done. All right, Michelle, you guys get the whole crew, or is it still, you're waiting, is Leanne coming, you said?
She, she is waiting to get started.
Yeah, we're... Yeah, why don't you come up, you guys.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you, Michelle. First, we just want to start out with... First, we just want to start out with, thanks for a very successful Morfest.
We think it went really, really well, this year was very smooth and lots of big attendance.
Yeah, it really lucked out with the weather.
We were nervous.
It rained about every day except that day, I mean, either side of it, and for two weeks, either side.
Yeah, we were like this close to just calling it. One of these days, it's gonna be bad weather, but it's been, I think we had one rainy Morfest. We had one pretty rainy Morfest, and even though it was relatively well-attended and fundraisers did relatively well, so, you know, I think from that perspective, people still want to get together, even if it's under a tent in the rain. You know, that year, Duane and I were watching the radar, you know, as storms were coming in and bands, so...
So how, how long has Morfest been going on?
So 2016 was the first Morfest, and that is when we dedicated the town, the new town office.
Yeah.
I think, you know, it was a morphing of an event from the energy community?
Was that, yeah?
We renamed it, we rebranded it, it was in the springtime, not the fall. So it's evolved since 2016, but really the organization of it and, you know, the heart of it, which is a community event, a chance for people to get together, hasn't changed since then. So that's why the committee thought, like, so it's been, what, six times? I think because we skipped one during COVID. It was time to, you know, write out some policies, it's like, it's been organized consistently, but, you know, better to get that stuff down. You know, what the theme of it is, how it runs, there's bylaws, it governed the makeup of the committee. And then the last part of what we sent you was just a recap of this year, just a, you know, one page, two-page brief, who is there, you know. And the genesis of the bylaws and the structure really came this year out of more people wanting to have tents and be member and come and be vendors and be part of Morfest. So we really wanted some developed structure around that, so that we could have something to both guide the committee and then we could show people that wanted to attend what the structure was, as opposed to just saying, no, the committee has decided, so that there was some structure there. So that was the real genesis behind, you know, first was the procedures on who could really vend and who we intended to have vend because of the historical significance of the event and where we wanted the mission of the event to be. And then just, you know, the number of people that were, that were wanting to, you know, really be there and apply and the intention of what they wanted to do at Morfest. And we had to say no, you know, to a couple people for the first time for space issues. You know, and I think as the event, it's, you know, we have hundreds of people go. So, you know, people expect Morfest, I think more people want to be a part of it, so...
And we had people right up to a couple days before Morfest, all of a sudden reaching out that we hadn't heard from, saying, hey, can we come, hey, we want to do this, hey, we want to do that. Well, so we gotta set up a timeframe and all of that as well.
That's the, you know, the cost of success.
It's a great problem to have.
Is there a copy of that?
Here.
Leanne, why don't you pull your chair up for the rest of your Morfest... Wouldn't be right without a full...
Yeah, it looks like a wrong word, I don't think it's a right name.
Yeah, so your success has drawn, created potential problems, but, you know, as far as what you said, who can, who can't get here or participate. I have not had an opportunity to go through this, you know, I got it this morning or last night, this morning, and, but just, I mean, looking at it, I think we were certainly due for some more organizational work, just guidelines. And I think, I mean, I haven't looked at them, but then you were here on this board, you... I mean, I think we have in town a general, all right, here's committees, here's how they run. As you saw tonight, Steve had, I think Chris had a new person from the rec committee. We're not here to micromanage and say, no, this person can, or it's not that person. It's kind of, all right, you folks, four or five, have, you know, started this and worked on it. It's, you know, I will read this and we'll come back with probably some changes or maybe I just really haven't unwritten it, but it'll be up to you guys to kind of enforce it and do it. You know, we're not here to pick chair people or memory, you know. This is how in town it works, I want it to be consistent with what we all do. And then as far as the policies, you know, we'll all look at all the policies, you know. You know, again, I haven't looked at them, who you, you know, who's a benefitter or who can be a vendor here, you know, we'll certainly look at that stuff and hopefully the consistent recommendation for you and certainly probably take what you got, and again, we're not, it's, and I appreciate you guys are doing this. So, you know, thank you for taking the time, and I know with Leanne and all three of your four of you have been working on it for, you know, a couple weeks, two or three weeks since Morfest got done. There's been a lot of texts and emails and phone calls and such. And so I'm sure it's a good piece of work, but, you know, and I look forward to going through it and providing some feedback.
I think when you read it, you'll, you'll, it will feel very much like Morfest the event. You know, there's, there's nothing in there that we're really not already doing or, you know, the intent of doing, it's, it's nothing groundbreaking. It's really in practice, we're just writing down what's done in practice. That way, you know, eventually, the four of us won't be here. And, you know, you'll have new people and it'll still work the same way. The hard to have Morfest will not change, you know, it'll still be a community event. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and I think it'll also help the folks that, you know, the community tents that want to be a part of Morfest and then any vendors that potentially want to be a part of Morfest to help guide them as well, if they want to apply to be, you know, a so-called quote-unquote vendor or a community tent, so they understand the heart of Morfest. Because I think, you know, we have vendors say, well, we want to come sell things at Morfest. And so that's what was, you know, time-consuming to explain, it's not really a vending event, right? It's a community event, and so I think with a document like this, and it's almost, the beginning of it, it's almost like a marketing piece to explain why we do Morfest as well. To help guide that conversation too, when we do have to explain to vendors that it's not really what this is about.
Right, yeah, I think started this was really, it was a celebration and we want to keep that in mind and we all want to be, you know, if someone turns around, just, you know, a little bit of a dollar here or a dollar there, you know, so we can keep things down.
And we want the space to showcase our community tents. We want the space to showcase the rec committee and magrav riders and, you know, to showcase those things in the library and things like that, so... And I think if you look at the recap and you look and see, you know, what community organizations were present, you know, I think everybody got a chance in Moretown and surrounding areas who really wanted to present to the community, they got a chance to be there.
Questions first?
I know, I looked this over earlier and it looks pretty solid, so...
Yeah.
We were gonna get it a little bit over, I think it's a good job. Certainly a great start and...
As far as, yeah, budget-wise, what we'll do is we'll take a look at this and then within a month or so, we'll get back to you. Maybe have y'all come back in and just roll over it and then kind of make a motion, put it into our bylaws and go from there. But if you have any questions, we'll reach out to one of you or all of you and if you guys are the same, if you have any further questions or anything like that, just certainly let Sasha know and we can all get it.
One, one thing that struck me as I went through, looked at activities, you know, that baker's battle? Don't worry about that. Baker's battle.
No way, I'm a winner, man. I have my spoon just laid in my kitchen.
That'd be the last thing, if that went away, John would go away.
We have to keep going, one of us has to be Johnny Sommers someday.
I think there was actually a comment on the Facebook, like, that there must be rigged, like, it was... Yeah, I was like, no, this is gonna get, like, pithy.
I can guarantee you, I was there when Sarah learned who she picked for the overall winner and she was like, your kid!
Demand a recount.
Yeah.
Like that Lola.
So how does that happen anyway? See that good, or is it like a...
He is that good.
But it's a cannoli every time, it's just a different version of a cannoli.
It's a cannoli cake! Yes!
Now, wasn't that, they had like seeds and stuff on it, right?
It was like hazelnut and meringue and...
It was quite a good tool. You call it a cookie, but it really was.
Plus, coming from him, you never know what was in it, so... That's why we all like it.
Eat this one first, bro.
Anything else? Lindsay, do you have?
No, I'm, honestly, no, but he spent a lot of work, so...
Stefan, you got anything?
No, I think that they pretty well did, they did a lot of the legwork, I just yap. No, maybe, that's basically what I did during the billing of this.
All right, well, thank you very much, and if there's nothing else, then we'll go ahead and move on.
Chris, I have just one comment. The rec committee doesn't have an understanding of their bylaws either. So I came into the office and it was directed, they go to the legal cities and panels, left a message last week, haven't heard back. But if you guys are gonna review bylaws for this committee, maybe I could save my time and...
Yeah.
And whoever's gonna do the work could, like, all town committees should, to your point, follow the same process.
Right. And I think we should have that, so you should have to go there, so Chris, let us take a look for it.
Okay.
And if you don't, then we'll get it, but yeah, I mean, we're looking for something uniform and great and for everybody. Kind of let you guys do what you do, and I mean, just, as long as someone can report back and... It's not what we're looking for, you know, we don't want to delegate.
You know, just how it carries on in the future when there's new people, yeah.
Exactly, no, there needs to be some structure.
We want, we want structure as well.
Yeah. You have 10 years from down the road, now you, who knows, right?
We want you to be able to know what to expect. Most, us to know what to expect from you.
He's already down.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're going anywhere.
Yeah. We're gonna have this question here, I can send you yours.
What's that?
Do you think I'm...
All right, so we got, let's go ahead and move forward with the library budgets. Please.
I have handouts. Do you have them? Two-page narrative and then the budget law. Ah, Sasha, I can one to two in a time rush, thank you so much, appreciate you. So Jennifer Hill, library trustee and secretary. Bridget Hardy, library trustee.
Say again?
Bridget Hardy.
Bridget, not Bridget Hardy, yeah.
Hardy, yeah. Just funny when you email her, there's an E in there, but it's just Bridget with a T at the end. So Allison is sorry she can't be here, she works on Mondays, so I'm here and Bridget's here, you know, to step in and Allison Douglas is the treasurer. But we thought we could just start with the narrative. The Moretown Memorial Library is an inclusive and vibrant gathering space that our community that provides access to robust programming, traditional and innovative materials and services. And so the two parts to this are the personality. And one of the parts we're wondering, and this is not a, the number one here is not a budgetary number item, but the idea of library and library director and assistant librarian and library services coordinator. So this year, we'd like to change the titles of the library employees to reflect the scope of their duties and to keep pace with other libraries of our size within Vermont. So we'd like to change the title of librarian to be library director and to change the title of assistant librarian to library services coordinator. And the reason we were bringing this up now is we were thinking that when we look at the line items on the budget, it would say library director instead of librarian. So that's kind of the timing of this request, is we're like, well, if we're gonna talk about this line by line, like, when we refer to the position as library director, so it would just allow some consistency there. And I know I emailed about library services coordinator and people were like, well, who's that? So we figured we could clarify, oh, but that's the role that Nicole is fulfilling. So that, and then, you know, in job descriptions and other appropriate places, we weren't sure where else, you know, Sasha or Sherilyn or the select board might come across it. So we've made those changes within our trustee board and it's reflected in our minutes and whatnot, but we just figured we would mention that as a way to be consistent across the board. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about that. Okay. So then number two is when we were looking at the library budget and when we specifically look at the personnel numbers, the library services coordinator with the role of the town hall. So for example, the projected budget for the 2024 library services coordinator, Nicole's salary includes the extra two hours, $20 per hour, as she's hired as the town hall custodian duties. So then this is an increase to the projected salary and we were just wondering if you wanted that to be present in the library's budget personnel line or if that should be present in the town hall, because they have separate line items, I believe. And I don't have access to that, so that was just a question we had. So we included it here in case that's where you want it to be.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, 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 for that. So, so if you're wondering, where does that number come from? But if you prefer it be pulled out and the $4,069 for the year be within the town hall budget, you know, you know, as long as we, as long as, you know, they can find it, you know, when it's time to pay the paycheck, you know. So whatever system works for you guys for that. And along those same lines, Corey, our library director, has increased duties of the town hall manager. And we are projecting, in looking at this, in, when we say projecting the library director's salary, we mean within the 2023 year, that there will be extra hours that she's been working as the town hall manager. So then when we were looking forward to the 2024 salary and calculation, currently it's 18 hours, but plus the two hours for the town hall manager duties, so that's where that, the rationale behind that. And then suggesting a $1 increase for the 2023 salary to 21 per hour. So when you see those numbers under the personnel, I just wanted to kind of explain where that was coming from. And that was all for the personnel.
Thank you.
Okay, and then under...
Any questions?
Oh yeah, any questions on that one? So then within the operating expenses, which is the remainder of the budget, for all of the line items in the operating expenses, we're asking for level funding for the 2024 budget. The budget of these items fits perfectly with the daily operating cost of the library. With current funding, the library is able to provide access to current relevant resources and provide robust and engaging programming. So the items that we are looking to be changed would be those three, the building maintenance, equipment, and then that's combined, and then supplies and materials. So under building maintenance, this is, we found in the 2023 budget that the cleaning fee for the town hall was being taken from the library's building and maintenance line. And that wasn't only the monthly cleaning of the space, that included cleaning after rentals, which if that is coming from the library's budget, then that line item would need to be increased to cover that. Right, so kind of referring back to that $4,069 that we discussed with the library services coordinator salary. salary when they were doing the town hall custodial work. And then the other question is if the cleaning supplies are also coming out of library building maintenance, we would just need the funds to be able to support those purchases. Because currently in the library building maintenance, 2023 budget doesn't have that built in. So it's that kind of, it's almost an echo to that same question is if that money is, if you would prefer it to be in the town hall budget, then that's where it will be or out of the library?
Right there. Fixed costs.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, the fixed cost, they need to be allocated.
Yeah, yeah.
Come out of the same bucket.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And then, and also just as the treasurer, when Allison's doing all of the work to, you know, it's, we're, I was, it's reconciliation, the reconciling of every month, it's, that's where it would kind of line up.
G O.
So if we know what's expected, you know, it helps with communication all along. Supplies and materials, these expenses are increasing due to the rising cost of goods, due to inflation, as well as our increasing for material. So that was the percentage increase in supplies and materials. And I think that was a consistent 10% for those two. Any questions about the operating expenses segment? Okay, and then when you see historical society on the bottom, that's not a separate line item or anything. We're just really excited that the select board is supporting the historical society's use of the old library building. And at the August 21st meeting, we see that the town offered to cover the $100 per month that would cover the costs of the heating and electricity for that use. And we just wanted to bring it up to make sure that if that's, if that's within the library budget, that that's what that is. She says very officially. So we just wanted to make sure to kind of finish that loop. Because remember, when we left, we said we were gonna talk as the trustees. So we were able to talk about it and we're moving forward with those arrangements, so.
So good.
To close that loop out, yeah. Because Cory and I were here to share about the strategic bridge plan. And I think the historical society presented right after that. So, yeah, so to close that loop. So we're happy to move forward with that.
Yeah, then he said, ask me about that.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, so that's why that shows up here.
Certainly, no questions right now. I mean, I certainly like when I see a flat budget or flat request, that is good. And as far as these other things, supplies and materials, you know, the cost of goods, as long as the budget's reflecting that, certainly I'm sure it's something that we will go ahead and approve. You bring up some good questions. The board needs to take some time to figure out where we want some of the expenses to show up. Nicole's expenses, whether it's salary or working or whatever she's doing, but just so that we can have a clear line. We understand the expenses are there, we just need to make sure it's clear where they are again, because there may be five years from now, different people, so everyone has the same. This is what's going on. Pay for from such.
Yes, and we definitely want to make sure that it's clear, you know, from our standpoint as the trustees and clear from the select board since in five years, it might not be those two individuals, Nicole and Cory, doing it. But right now, we want to make sure that they do get compensated fairly for it, even if in the future those positions do get separated out of that building per se.
No, I agree. And I think, you know, we'll look at the recommendations of the salaries. We try to keep things for all in-town employees currently. Cola salary cost of living usually is around the same. Sometimes we do other things like just a salary adjustment. And that's something that we usually look into, I think we did with Nicole in April, May. So if we look at something, we'll probably give salaried, uh, cola increases, wherever the states, we usually follow that. In the last few years, it's been six or seven percent, I think, is a little bit given. So I don't know what that will be, but we'll come back with whatever that happens to be. And then if it's not making up the dollar that you're asking for, we can take a look at that and maybe do a salary increase if, you know, there's some justification for it. And then we carry that forward from where we make those adjustments. Any, so this will clear up, there's some emails I've been seeing about Nicole's back pay. So any, which we've, we try to, we've switched in the last few years, any of these cola adjustments, we try to just start very off in January, so it makes it easier, so there's no, makes it easier the treasury, so they don't have to go back and make retro active salaries, because that typically you would do that, you wouldn't do that until the budget was over gone until in March. Once the town approves your budget, then they approve you increasing someone's salary. And it's after that where we, and those, so at that point, any of those type of increases are always retroactive beginning of the year, a cost of living increase. When we make a salary adjustment, it's going from that day on. That is not.
Oh, that's important clarification.
Yeah, so that, and we usually will do those, it's usually the first or second meeting after the new select board has been built. I don't know why, it's just, I guess, historyism or whatever, that's the way it's always been. So we'll continue with that. And that seems to work there. And so anytime you have those type of adjustments, you think, you know, I know we've worked several times now, I think Cory's paying the last three or four years, we've done those adjustments like that, so. Anything else you want to add or questions you have for us?
Will they come back in after we?
We can, what we'll do is we'll go through and we'll let you know. Again, I don't anticipate not approving your budget, you know? We will, once we're through, and it's usually it's not till the end of December, mid-December before we're finally through everyone and we've gotten everything through. And then we'll make a decision on the final budget. But at that point, we'll reach out to you and let you know.
Oh, that'd be great.
And if there's questions you have, you know, certainly can, you know, or if we, if we go through and there's something that we disagree with or need clarification, we'll come back and ask you. Don't, we're not here surprising where all of a sudden you open your, or your bar and say, what do you mean? Slash 10 grand or something like that. If there's any major cotton or shifting around, we'll let you know. You know, we'll give.
Yeah, that was a question Allison wanted us to ask, so thank you. That would be great. Yeah, she wasn't sure when to know and to hear back, so.
If we, what we'd like to do is get everyone, so we'll go through it, he will take you home, digest a little bit, and then we spend a couple meetings in December, the end of Jan, uh, end of December, beginning of January, just, all right, let's approve these portions of the budget. And so, if there's any questions between now and then, certainly reach out. If there's any explanations or clarities, then we'll get back to you and let you know where those other pieces are gonna be moved to, whether we keep it.
Oh, thank you.
Because we'll be doing the town hall, so we might as well get that all straightened out. People will know.
Great.
Sound good?
Yes.
All right.
Awesome. Well, good to see you all. Thanks for standing here. Thanks Sasha. I'm gonna knock, knock over the mic.
See, Bridget gets the long-term award. She came, she was here to begin this meeting, so.
I had to like leave before.
The be witching hour.
Get everybody laid down and then leave the house and everybody like.
Well, if you guys want to run the waste field or water, water, for a drink, go ahead. Nothing will know.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, there.
Thank you.
Do you need the side chairs or anything?
Oh, no, no, we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How can I do? Sorry, you.
Oh, okay. What is it?
I open there.
Yeah, can you close it?
No, I closed it.
Thanks, Chris. So all right, so we heard, does anyone have anything that sticks off to them on the budgets or concerns before everyone takes it home and reads it? I mean, the only thing we need to do is, and they pointed out nicely, this was, where are we gonna put these changes? You know, figure that out as we go through the town hall. You know, figure out where it makes most, and talk to you guys.
That might be the hard part too, on Nicole's timesheet. She's added two more hours, but we don't really know if it's library cleaning or town hall cleaning. So maybe there just needs to be.
To clarify.
A block for just cleaning, I don't know.
I think that's what we should do is try to, if it's gonna be one position, we should try to have all of the salaries hopefully under one umbrella.
Just for the cleaning part of it, because she added the two hours added.
Yeah.
We don't know which one is for.
Or just add it as salaries under whatever that they were saying is library services. I don't know.
Yeah, let's talk, let's see what Cheryl and.
I think it's just as easy as Sasha's saying, just having, you know, a piece of, okay, how many hours do we have here?
We'll use this code.
Yeah, just have, just like the road group, the road group codes there, stuff there on.
Yeah. Our police department's saying.
We're all, you have a client, you don't have many hours for that client.
And you just stick it on the timesheet, so then, I mean, it's all going to payable as one anyway. But when you put it into your general ledger, you're gonna put it where it needs to be. So it doesn't matter in a payroll wise, it just matters in your general ledger.
So it seemed like relatively small issues. So we were getting to me for reports and communications. And so let me start there. So today I was, or the last week, working with Martin and Navistar in Clarks, it's not Clarks anymore, it's.
Allegiant.
Allegiant. And so Sean's truck is, we all know it's gone through another, you know, the head that's gone. So there's two, two things that they're willing to do. Option one is do another head, but it does not, that doesn't seem like a good option because we've done three and that has not fixed it, and they're not gonna do anything different.
It's still under warranty, basically, is the problem, right?
Well, that.
But not the problem, or it's supposed to be.
That's what I'm getting at.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, but good question, good segue, Don. So the other, the other option is a new engine, which is the option we need, we need, the truck needs a new engine.
Yeah.
And now the question becomes, who's, who's gonna pay for it? Whose responsibility is this? So Navistar, which is international, has agreed to pay about half. And so we're talking a $41,000 job. And there's also.
For us, or our?
No, no, our half actually is gonna be less, our half, the whole job is around $41,000.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's put out to us that we would pay no more than $17,000. And that includes the engine, but there's also about $5,000 worth of diagnostic work that Allegiance has done. And Navistar International is gonna pay them. So, so we're all, and this is a six-year-old truck, six years, four months. Started this problem, it was under warranty. So there is, there's, you know, I think if you wanted to get a lawyer involved, you could probably go down that route, fight them, it would probably cost you 10 grand as a lawyer, and we wouldn't have a truck in a year and a half.
Probably a year.
I think we're in a position where we need to move forward because we need that, we need the truck.
Yeah.
I think Allegiance needs to put some skin in the game, because everything that we're getting is from Navistar, which is the international. So they're paying for half the motor and insulation, and they're paying for the diagnostics. So the place where we bought to have trucks is really, what kind of word can I say, getting on scot-free. But we don't have any leverage because we need the truck, they know it. But what I thought is I would at least make it, you know, a shot, take a shot at it tomorrow. I haven't spoken to Randy, I've spoken to a local guy from international, and then I spoke to the regional manager from Chicago today on it. So it's been working on, and those guys, and those guys actually have been really good. And they're trying to push Randy to do something as well. But I don't know whether we'll get anything, or what I would like, I would like to get permission from the board to move forward with doing a repair at 17. And if I can do some different tomorrow morning and get it less, but, you know, I thought I'd go in off of 12 on our part and just call it.
Try to get them to take the file off.
Take it to take the file off.
It doesn't cost them the file, because they'll do what they have to do. Now, have we paid anything for, so far, like all of these different heads?
No.
Some, some of it we did, but some of it mysteriously went away.
Right. So they've.
Oh, yeah, I don't think they have any choice.
Now, if they do the head and that head goes again, will they fix it?
No, it's one and done now.
And it's out of warranty now.
So if they lose the motor job and the motor job doesn't work and it blows the head again, are they gonna fix it?
I didn't ask that.
I bet that.
No, I think that's a good question. What type of warranty? If it's a new motor, we should have a warranty on the new motor. Because it is, it's a re manufactured motor, but it's, it's, we call new, it's not something that's bought out of the junkyard, it's re manufactured. So there should be.
Right.
But yes, there will be, we'll go forward, I guess, without a warranty on the new motor. I mean, I'm not, and I don't think Navistar would be willing to pay, I mean, they're, actually, it's money out of their pockets, not coming from them, the motor, so there's coughing up money to have it done. And they're, so they're gonna want a warranty too.
Yeah.
And those guys have been pretty good to work with.
When does, when was the, when was this truck due to, what's its, when was its lifespan?
Another year or two.
Yeah, another year or two. But that may be one of the things where we look at it, and you run it another year, because you have a new motor in it. And it has not, you know, it's sat for almost seven, eight months.
Yeah.
It just hasn't been used, so.
Either get a new motor, you know, just.
You get a new motor.
No, it's used this summer.
Then the time that, you know, you didn't use it.
Yeah, maybe that.
Maybe you get an extra year.
It was used this summer.
Oh, no, it was used some, some of that.
Yeah, because I watched it get towed into the lot, the last time it died.
But, yeah, I had Mark calculate it though, I wanted to see how much time we had out of truck. There's no. There's no, it was between seven and eight months. So it's saved a little there.
Is there any, have they said that they can have it to us by?
No, we're waiting on that, so he actually put, in order to get a date like that, they had to put the order in for the motor. So they ordered the motor today. To get that date to be, you know. So he thought he was going to have, I mean, let me check. He was hoping to have it to me by six tonight, but. Jason Heckler right here. Hey, Tom, Randy relayed the estimated ship date for the SRC engineering man facility is January 24. This can improve, but it is worst case. Let me know if you have any questions.
So we're going to be out that time, go on later.
Let me see what Martin was, probably on that, so we can get that back. He wasn't, so keep it to ourselves tonight, let him sleep. All right, so there, he said that's worst case, couldn't get better.
There's no scenario of like trying to just.
No, that was my last week, that was my last week playing, and I couldn't, nothing.
Because you wouldn't get it if you bought a new truck, you wouldn't get that for a year.
Right, there's no.
The way the market is.
No, there's nothing available, nothing out there. And I was hoping that the, the one that we purchased, the, what's it, Star, Western Star. We looked into that to see if that could get here sooner. But it doesn't even have the body on it, so that would, it's going to be next spring.
But I know this is probably a question of while they're fixing it or anything, they don't have a truck to use.
I was just going to ask the same thing.
That's a good, it's a good question, I would bring that up.
I'm not sure they're going to want to do that, but maybe they would.
I do know that the guys have asked the state workers if they have extra trucks, and they say no.
Well, they have internationals too, so they're all broke down.
I'm pretty sure that truck was out part of last winter too.
Yeah, a little bit.
So we can tell Martin that we've got some good news and some bad news. Good news is someone's going to get a little break, they're not going to be working all the time. The bad news is because you don't have a truck.
Or you try to bargain with them again, and okay, well, maybe we do the 17 and we get a newer truck out of this too.
Yeah, that's what we'll.
Oh, yeah.
We gotta get.
You have a choice. Say, well, you know.
No, I was thinking at least in that way, say, work in, earn money and then go to a loaner and then. But that's. It's where we are, folks.
All right, so what do we make a motion that we authorize you to spend?
Well, up to 17.
To 17. And where, do we have to state where we're getting the money from, or?
No.
Discretionary fund?
I'm going to ask Cheryl, we might have some.
I think we can use.
ARBA money.
Yeah, we can use ARBA money. How about from the?
Capital Reserve. It's an emergency.
Yeah. We can use Capital Reserve.
Yeah, so we can, we can do that, and there might be, I know we had, there was a few dollars left of the ARBA stuff that hadn't been spoken for. So see what's there. All right, so. Continue.
Is that a motion of you?
I make a motion, we authorize Tom to, or the select board authorize $17,000 for the new engine for.
Up to.
Up to $17,000 for a new engine for.
The international.
International.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, whoops. So it's a good thing we have that little, or the Dodge is a little bit bigger truck than, because that was going to, that's going to get used a little more.
Less than rolls out.
Less than rolls out. You got a grill. Oh, I got those for him. Yeah, they didn't look as well as we thought.
The state is doing temporary bridges too. I don't know, if they just didn't think that that was an option when they get their site visit or not.
I know they look, that was some, they look at that.
Those are lovers of the eighties, huh?
Yeah. That was my idea too, I thought that was the best idea is temporary bridge, but I'm not the engineer and I'm the one footing the bills, so. So that was, I think pretty much what I had, like to get the select board minutes approved.
Well, we, I don't, when you went around asking.
Oh, yeah, oh, Tom.
So I'll keep it, you know, usually I have a bunch of stuff, but I'm just going to stick with one thing, which is, I really am loving segueing into this after we just had this meltdown with the truck. But to remind everybody, we were going to decide about the construction manager for the program for the town hall project. And the $7,800 that I'm going to need to, that we need to find, I mean, I love the way we have to find money, but. I'd either base it on that it's something that we borrow or something, and then when we get, you know, this is just going to move us further along in preparation for the grants, for the, the two big grants that we're going to have, so the $500,000 Merker grant and the one for the, you know, the library monies that are, that are out there.
And so this is not, it's, we're not locked in long-term to this guy doing construction.
Well, we'll be, no, this firm will be, will do the construction, you know, we vetted out three, well, one firm dropped out, so we vetted out two firms. Yes, this firm will, will work with us as a partner in the project. They will do some self-performing, but they'll also get bids from, you know, three mechanical subs, you know, all the different MEP subs, you know, mechanical, electrical plumbing or whatever, you know. And then they'll also work within, they'll do the cost estimates that we're going to get, as I could recount through the books, that's what they do, but you know. And then, you know, yes, there'll be some work that they'll self-perform, but it'll all, that'll be the next phase of the project. They'll provide a hard number from we finish this design development. That's what we're going to go with, then we can then apply for these grants. And then in the next phase of work, this firm will be part of that next phase of work with their, you know, their costs of self-performing certain jobs and doing project management and, you know, building the job, you know, they'll.
This first $7,800 is to get us, to see if we're going to get any for the grants, is that?
No, the first $7,800 is for them to, they'll be, you know, come onboard, they'll start to work with the design team, they'll start to get some of the mechanical pricing. They'll, they'll start to, you know, say, no, do it, you know, they'll look at an item and say, no, you can do it this way, and it'll be less money, or we can build it this way, you know, they'll be part of that process to, to establish the scope of work. And then they'll price the scope of work, so then we'll all have a hard number to do the town hall, you know, renovations, this is what it's going to cost. And then that's what we're going to be able to use when we go for the grants. You know, this is what the lift is, this is what the draft lobby is, this is what the fixing, the water mitigation, and stuff like that. It'll all be broken down into categories.
But this is, the understanding will be that we're not hiring that for the whole project, right?
No, no, we wouldn't, you, you probably would, but no, you, not, no, it'll just be this phase. But it, it, that, it wouldn't make any sense not to, but they'll be within that whole scope, you know, you'll still have an architect onboard after the design developments. You know, they still stay onboard in the next phase of watching, making sure it's designed or answering questions and all that, and they don't just go away. They'll still be using the same architectural firm as you would still be using the same construction.
We have to sign a contract with them to say.
Well, just for this first phase, no, because they'll give you, you know, you'll get pricing for the, it'll all be in the next pricing thing of the whole project, you know? But again, you know, it's just a matter of, you know, where, you know, where we sign, how we can fund it.
So where do you see us?
Yeah, I need to step out later.
Where, I guess in six months, I'm trying to wonder, we're spending, we've been spending a fair amount of money on, on the, on these things. And when are we at a point where we can go to the town and say, all right, this is.
We should be at town meeting, have hard drawings and a high price, and probably even know where we stand with the grants. I mean, they're, they were, the library grant thing was supposed to, is, was supposed to be out this fall, so now the word we're getting is it's going to be more December, January. And the same with the Merker grants, the physical application. So where we're trying to be is by, not the end of October, but as we get into November, to have, you know, to be done with the design drawings, you know, and, and start to have a hard number of what it's going to take so that we can start applying for the, for the grants. So yes, by town meeting, we should be able to go, you know, here we are now. I don't think you're going to be shovel-ready probably, you know, by the time, you know, we shake out. I don't think you'll start the project in the fall of 2024, it'll probably be the spring of 2025 by the time you get.
No, I'm just looking at, you know, a point where we, you know, you know, this $7,800 here, there's been 20, you know, in this.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And we need to come to a point where we cut bait or do the thing.
Oh, yeah, no, we're, we're, there's no turning back, we're going to fish or cut bait, we're, we're on target to go for these grants, it's the only way we're going to pull this thing off.
Right. And these people are essential to get us there.
There, yes.
Because, I mean, so far, these big grants is not, not the way we had hoped. Like the project out here, you know, and we're on year six now or whatever, and the sidewalk, we had issues on this side and then the other side. So we have to, we have to do that next summer. You know, so.
Yeah.
But we've got approval, so I certainly wouldn't want to go to the town until we've got approval on.
Oh, yeah.
We know we have the grant.
Right, well, no, right, and also not to, it'd be nice to, to also show the town that we're, you know, 80 or 90% of the projects is going to be done through grants. I also was at a meeting today, we have a group of people who are on the town hall committee or subcommittee, and we're working on a capital campaign as well. So, you know, there'll be a fundraising effort, so, you know, reaching out to people in the community and, and other, and how they can participate. So that's in the early stages of coming together.
Okay.
I know it's an ask, I'm not sure what would be happening to get it, or if there, as I mentioned, there's a way that it can be, some money, so when we go forward with the grants, and maybe if we get a pickup percentage of it, we can get paid back, or when we do a capital campaign, that we can, you know, you know, hopefully be able to, you know, put the, put the money back into the capital, with capital funds.
Because we're already at 104% over budget on the town hall.
Yeah, I mean, we're, the whole, unfortunately, as you go through with it, and we just throw on this.
I mean, the other scenario would be, we finish the design development, we don't do the construction manager group, which has a lot of advantages, as I outlined in that.
Right, what you said.
Or we have to, or we'll go through design development, have the final drawings, and then we, we put it out to a, a firm that will do the, do an estimate, you know, for somewhere between $4,000 and $5,000, to give you a, a construction estimate. But that, they're just going to take the drawings and price them, it's not going to be a part, you know, someone who's part of the team looking for the, for cost savings and the best way to build it, is just going to go, well, yeah, this costs as much, this costs that much. Not someone who's going to go, no, you could do it this way and save that.
So will he, they be going out and getting those prices then?
Mm-hmm, you know, no, they'll be pricing it themselves and working with, you know, their trades that they work with getting prices, you know, like three prices for a mechanical or, you know, whatever.
And so as far as, what would, what would they do, you know, when you talk about their self-work, what type of?
Oh, what do they do for self, they do, they have a crew that does, you know, carpentry and drywall and, you know, they, you know, demolition and, you know, stuff like that. They run, they, their boots on the ground, running the job, working on the job, you know, they'll have a superintendent there and, you know.
And if they don't handle the job, then they hire out, they self-contract.
If they can't, right, if they can't self-perform a certain item, they don't, you know. I can send you a whole thing, you know, of, you know, of the firm, and they, you know, what they answered in the RFP and stuff. I think I may already have.
No, you did, I think I read that.
Yeah.
But it sounds like it's basically, it's either $7,800 and they do all the work, or it's going to be $4,000 to $5,000 and we have to do all the work and.
Well, no, this, yeah, well, no, they, then we'll get a, they'll do the work of getting the numbers together, but they'll work on, one guy is just going to give you a, take a piece of paper and just give, this is a hard number. The other construction manager person is going to come online to the project and work towards those num, you know, be working on those numbers. You know, and putting it together and finding cost savings and ways to do it, that's, you know, that's part of their partnership in the project. I don't know how to describe it any better than what I did in the sense.
So when we, I'm just wondering, if we hire them as the project manager, what's their incentive to keep the prices down on the things that they self-do?
What's their incentive on their self-performing, what their, their jobs are?
Yeah.
Well, they're, first of all, they're going to, you'll get, you'll have pricing for what those things are, and they can, they'll have, they'll have comparison cost, but they'll, they'll also price it as well. But they'll have a price from another sub.
Okay, that's.
But in this, in this day and age where it's so hard to get different trades, the fact that they can self-perform stuff and will have cost, you know, a cost narrative, we will find that that's a better route because, you know, you know, find, you know, to do anything these days, unless maybe the market's going to change in a year, but, you know.
All right, well, I think for first phase, it's probably more cost-effective. I don't, you know, I just want to see kind of an end to it so that we can get to.
I agree, well, after this next phase, there's an end to it until we, we have the numbers and then we start going and get the, you know, the grants and the, the capital campaign will kick off when we have those numbers as well. So then we can go to different folks and say, yeah, this is what we need to, you know.
Put on the wax layers and say, Eric, you need a hundred grand for this.
Or, you know, the idea is maybe, you know, people will donate and get their name on the mailboxes that we're going to be saving, that they'll be down in the lower level, you know, as a wall. Maybe someone, you know, there'll be some donation for if you make an X amount of donation, your name will be on the little mailbox down there. You know, maybe there'll be someone in town who'll say, yeah, Will, I'd like to have my name on the draft lobby, you know, you know, there'll be a little plaque for that person or something. I think that's definitely, I think that there, there will be support in the community that way, that there's some people in town who will, will help, you know, will turn it to this.
It's good to hear.
Yeah.
All right, so.
What do we have left for ARBA?
I do not exactly know what it is, let's. I, I do not exactly know what it is. Let's.
He was the.
You're the treasurer. You're the assistant treasurer.
Assistant.
I said assistant.
I saw your hand.
Are you answering?
I know that, I mean, this comes up all the time, what we have left and what we've spent. And the numbers seem to change, or we don't, we don't get them. I mean, I, I would recommend that if we have enough, we use Arvin for this and use the capital reserve fund for the, the truck.
All right, well, I think there's at least eight thousand in there, based on what we've.
I think there are two.
What was it, seventy-eight or seventy-five?
Seventy-eight.
Ten, nine, seven.
Who's that? So what's the, who's the?
The firm is Naylor and Breen. They're out of Brandon, Vermont.
Okay.
Yeah, they're actually doing a couple of, of town halls right now. I'm one of Brandon. They're, they're doing a library town hall project there right now. Yeah, I mean, we did a whole vetting.
Sure. Who was the other, who was the?
The other firm is Stewart.
Stewart Construction.
Yeah. And, you know, we're going back and forth. Naylor and Breen had the better pricing and more experience and, and such. I mean, I'd love to send you our evaluation sheets and stuff too.
I just, it'd be nice to have those for record though.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
So that it's just shown.
I'll go through and make sure that I've sent it to Cheryl.
Yeah, make sure there's copies there so everyone has that. So. John, why don't you go ahead and, um.
No, so I'll make a motion that we authorize the expenditure of seventy-eight hundred dollars to pay for.
The construction manager.
The construction manager, Naylor and.
Naylor.
Naylor and Breen.
Is there a second? Thank you, Robin. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Um, what was that? Was that an aye for me?
Yeah, it was aye. Aye. Aye, aye.
All right.
And Don, Don is right. I'm sure that people will come forward. It was a, a great event Saturday.
Yeah, it was. It was really great.
Yeah.
Were you able to attend, John?
Yes.
And lots of lively talk and spirit there, wasn't it?
Yes, well, it sure was, yeah. Noticed most of, probably two-thirds or four more town talk.
Oh, you think?
Oh, there's a lot more town talk.
Oh, I didn't.
Almost everybody on my, on housing.
Oh, from up in the row, oh, yeah. I sent, I actually sent it out to about sixty-five people. I have an email to get people in town. And it was great to see a lot of folks come.
And it was good.
Yeah.
And the performance center was good, so.
Yeah, yeah, those guys are good too. It was nice of them to come and play.
And Angelo's meatballs.
Yeah, his meatballs were good. Randy's grab with him came out was great. Yeah, it's good.
All right, folks, why don't we go ahead on the select board minutes? I think we were going to talk about our paths.
Yeah, I'll make a motion we approve the minutes of October second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now we have whole business, our funds, we decided that we need to know how much we have or don't have. The trails, again, when did we say, when Dave was here, we, we put Dave on the board for that, right?
Did we say on November sixth? I don't know.
I think we did, uh, the twentieth, wasn't it?
I believe so.
Yeah.
I think it was the twentieth.
Yeah.
That was very close to hundred.
Yeah, it was the second, second meeting, yeah.
Which one, when is it?
The twentieth.
Of, of November.
Of November.
How much time would you like on the agenda for that?
Oh, probably a good half an hour, forty minutes, forty minutes probably. This'll be, that'll be long enough for me to be ready to move on after that. And next, our next meeting though, we can talk about road, class four road. Bring up those policies again and just go over them and, um, and that'll be good for the following meeting or the twentieth meeting. We'll say, all right, this is our policy on class four. It's, although the DRB will not be there, but it's something we need to present to the DRB that needs to be in a condition or something when they're allowing class four buildings. But they need to sign off on it or something that, oh, this is the road policy. So that there's, you know, used. So we got time. There's always, there's been confusion throughout and that's why we're trying to play it out.
Just in terms of also about meetings, you know, just to get back, as we talked about, gave, gave an update about the scoping study for the sidewalk of shit, scoping study for the sidewalk in North Mortown. So that they, the next step will be, would be on, hopefully, I don't know, on November sixth. Unfortunately, I thought I was going to be able to come with more information today, but the meeting that we were supposed to have last Friday got canceled. And now the next meeting is this Friday. But I know, you know, I did get an e, an email from Emily Lewis, who's with the boys and King, you know. Altern, it's called alternative meeting. Um, it's going to, you know, it'll be here, here. I thought maybe we could try to have it over there. This, just a flyer, it can get changed. They have it down for six P M., but, you know, I could, when I'm at this meeting next Friday, I could tell them what time.
How long are they going to need for it to?
I think it's like the last time when we, they came to.
Half an hour.
Talks.
Yeah, twenty, twenty minutes probably, maybe, um, six, you were.
Six or five?
Yeah, six or five. So we have the open meeting or general public comment. So right after general public comment.
So I'll just tell them six, ten, or six oh five.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's going to be North Mortown Scoping Study Alternative Meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll send you this, what, what they.
Thank you.
You know, what they sent.
I remember they said they were coming back with that.
And, um, yeah, if we, you know, there was names, there were people were here, if we can reach out to them and let them know. Um, and also the, the gal that was, that came here requesting, um.
Jennifer Durant.
Oh, she's on the.
Home owners, yeah.
Yeah. Get it to her so they can, she can maybe send it out.
And I'm also in touch with someone there who lives there, who I've talked to about this already because they're trying to also get signatures for that letter and work for the, the speed. They're slowing speed, so I'll, I'll communicate to her too.
All right, yeah.
She just asked me the other day.
So everyone feels like they're, have important calls.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'll work on that this week so that they. We need those little babies in here.
Yeah.
I didn't realize she was a co-principal with Dwayne.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, it's a present.
Who's that?
Jennifer Durant is co-principal with Dwayne Pearson.
Oh, really?
The president, yeah.
And Callie, you're still working on the, uh, coordinates or whatever for the buggies, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, um, anyone else? Is there any new business or anything else that we need to address tonight or?
Well, I haven't given up on yet, you know, I haven't, every time I'm going to mine, there hasn't been anybody there, but what happened, the folks who told me, fine, we'll do a meeting. So, you know, I'll try it this week.
Yeah, I, I thought about that again.
Yeah, I haven't forgotten. I'm still just still on my list.
I was probably there the other day and they were out there and they must have been talking about it because they were standing and they were pointing this way and they were like, I'm not stopping.
You're like standing slave on a break, so you're really.
Yeah. Cause there was like three or four when they were out. You know, they're pointing at things and they're looking and I'm like, oh, holy crap.
Well, it's getting pretty close to when it's, it switches to winter anyway, so we're not going to have the option. And I think if they're out there, it's just.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, we have some warrants and stuff to sign. Sasha, I know we've got.
Yep.
We need that thing for you tomorrow.
What?
The forest for you.
I know, it's a while for like that. I guess we might send the draft in.
No, he, I, I'm sorry.
This is Carol Chamberlain, that's time to sign that.
Okay.
There's the permit for Washington County.
I think we're really lucky on that to be able to get someone knows what they're doing, who.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
So quickly, I mean.
I know, she's been around. She's always waiting for, last thing to start sending, I had a lot of Friday emails.
Yeah, I mean, she knows.
It has to be down by Monday.
Oh, yeah. If you can sign that, uh, I'm sorry, I still want you to sign that. I just, there's two places that needs to be signed.
Is that the annual thing that you need to have on file for your site or something?
There's not, there's no, I got nothing. I have no place for my phone to answer.
You have insurance.
Says they don't have it. It's not even on, it's not on here.
Just say you declined or whatever.
Or you declined.
On your wrist. Once you were.
They can have that insurance somewhere else. It's number two. Mine are office healthcare.
I don't have any for it. Except for town. If I can, I'll.
Sasha, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a work for me. I, yeah, how do you answer it?
You put, you can either put part-time or seasonal employee and let's see, and I do not have. I'm covered by Medicare. I know, there isn't, there really isn't.
I could have answered, it would be just like, I don't know what to fucking.
I would, I would say it really should be, I have healthcare coverage at Office Hospital and Physician Services. My coverage is private, provided for Medicare.
Do you know where this is? I can't think of this guy. It's terrible information.
Down here.
The third one down there.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Where's Derby Farm? I've never heard of it. John, do you, Derby Farm? What's that?
Derby Farms. Is that over Maplewood?
Yes, from the intersection of the road with Maplewood Common.
Which is over towards Hartwood, that.
Yes, right.
Okay. I mean, I was fine with that. I just, I'd kind of like to know where some of these places were, now it's.
Oh, yeah. It's all of us here.
Who's the employee? Is she? Put yes on the eighteen. If yes, stop. Please sign the bottom of forms, submit to employer.
Yeah, I, I didn't get that by. I supposed to sign this?
Do you have any idea why she put an X on it? I'm under eighteen.
No, it could have been just an error.
No, she put it on Don.
I wish I was under eighteen, but I'm not. So cross that out.
Yes, please correct our error on that one.
Because, you know, you've signed it, you certify it's true in the best of my knowledge.
So I'm not sure if I.
I'm not sure people do perjury, right?
Or agree with this. So.
I haven't signed it yet.
This is, excuse me, folks, I'm, uh, I'm going to bring this up here. So this error is an admissions. It's for the Dana Jenkins life estate. It's changing from two seventy-five to two fifty. Two fifty-one. And it's because they lost court of the year renting the cabins due to permit court case.
So they're saying the value of the property went down and so the tax.
Oh, Dana Jenkins, it is BKA one traps.
Well, he knows that, but.
But I don't get where we would. These, was this, because these things had not been assessed.
Right.
As rental units and.
Right.
How can the value of them go down?
Right.
This value is still the same whether they rented or not.
Yeah, so I'm going to say no to this and, um.
Well, and the thing is, it's as of April first.
All right.
So if they were, weren't they planning on renting them this summer? And I think so. So, yeah, it's as of April first, so.
Which would be towards next year's price.
If they, if it even mattered, but it doesn't matter. I mean, you're not.
So then you're not going to.
Price is a rental unit. It's a price of the value of the building.
Right, and you're not going to go back next year and reassess it, are you, from?
Right. Well, we rented it five times, so now it's worth this much. Now we rented it twenty times, so it's worth, you know.
But the rental is not that you could do.
With the value of the property.
No, it's not like business personal property where you're down.
A decrease in the, um, value of the property.
Property because they weren't able to rent it because of our court case with them.
Cause they didn't have a permit.
Because they hadn't had a permit for anybody to live there, but now they do. But, I mean, now they can, but now they can rent it.
But it's as of April first. So if as of April first, they did not, then.
Then that might count. We might even consider it, but at this point, why don't we consider it?
If you buy a piece of land and you get a permit in June to put a house on it and your house is done and.
Which I need to sign, yeah, a few more of those, uh, ramen, I'm sorry.
You're not going to get taxed on your house.
Right.
Until.
Built.
The next.
Year.
Until as of April first.
Right.
So the following year. So you're not going to get taxed.
Give them a waiver, it would be next year for this year's taxes, but it's irrelevant because it's not.
Quite frankly, I think that takes a little bit of.
You know, Frank, if he rents a property, his property, because apartments are worth five hundred thousand dollars, whether they're vacant or not, it's still a price of five thousand dollars.
Quite frankly, I don't, um, you know, I guess they can always do what they want, but they may have not been happy with the court case, but I think they got treated quite well. And the select board really did them right. And so I think them trying to nitpick like that shows that, I guess, they did not see what we did for them.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is going around.
Yes. Oh, good deed should go on.
No, I'm glad that you brought that up because we.
But I like to read them to make sure that. Yes.
For the greater.
Greater.
The greater. This looks like it's missing you.
Yeah.
We, people don't understand that all the time, so they.
Yeah, I think maybe they're just, maybe it's a missing.
Now, if they had, if we were to have the tax on business personal property.
Right, that would be a different matter.
That would be a different matter because.
It's simply the value of the property.
Right, and the depreciation.
And if we, if we base the value of the property on what they're getting out of the rentals, I mean, I looked at it on like Airbnb and shit and.
What of the business personal property taxes?
Do we send like an explanation to that or?
Well, whoever came up with that and sent it to us, we'll send them an explanation.
No, no, I don't, I don't know. Yeah.
Omission denied.
Basically, right.
No, I didn't know if we send it with some kind of reasoning or something. No, I didn't know if we sent it with some kind of reasoning or something.
What do you say?
Um, at some point, I would like to have a, an executive session for myself with you guys, not tonight because it's so late and there's so many...
Okie dokie.
John, Callie, Don, me, this one, I don't have any meter, so...
We can plan that for our next meeting.
Okay.
And just plan it, let's do it, it's better at the end, so that way we don't need to kick people out. And if you want to send anyone or send us a little recap of what you wanna talk about,
Probably the next month I will have gray hair.
You'll have gray hair?
Really?
Yeah.
Is your daughter going, what's she doing now?
No, I take over as treasurer November first.
Oh, wow.
And I have no assistant going into...
Well, you have an assistant yourself.
No.
Sasha, how many hours of work?
Going into second quarter tax payments, second quarter sewer and water payments.
You guys just aren't paying enough.
That's the thing, we're not not paying enough.
Well, obviously not, 'cause otherwise people would be clawing on the door to get there.
No one clawing on the door for my child. No one wanted it. I mean, you get awesome retirement, 'cause it's beamers.
I'll look into it, maybe that is something I can do.
You get a, you work seven thirty to four Monday through Friday, seven thirty to three, or seven, to Thursday, seven thirty to three on Friday.
Automobile, anything like that?
No, no, Craig's the only one, we just cut a check for sixty, six, seven thousand dollars for him, yes.
If I take the job, I get one of those.
That's how it works, though, that's not me.
All right, so everyone, thank you for everyone's time and efforts tonight, I appreciate it. If everything's all settled, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Everyone be safe, go on home.
Who is that, Callie or John? John?
Who's second?
Second?